Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Virginia Council Chambers. Tonight is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, November 23, 2021. Time is 5:30 PM. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Bearbo?
Present.
Freedleeb?
Present.
Paulson?
Present.
Biondich?
Present.
Johnson?
Here.
Barneselli?
Here.
Huffy?
Present. Everyone, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And once again, good evening and welcome those who are listening at home and other media outlets and those who are in attendance at the council meeting today. Move item number four on the agenda, which is the public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone from the general public to come and address the council with any issue or concern or comments they have. So at this point in time, is there anyone that would like to address the council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to item number five, the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a counselor or a citizen of the City of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval of corrections of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on November 9, 2021, and the special meeting that was held on November 17, 2021. And 5.2 is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 21-022, the schedule of bills. Those are the two items on the consent agenda. Looking for council action.
I will move the consent agenda.
Counselor Johnson moves to approve the consent agenda. Support by?
Port.
Counsel Freedleeb, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Move to item six on the agenda, appearances. We have no one scheduled to appear before the council this evening. Again, this is an opportunity for anyone from the public who'd like to come and speak. They're welcome to do so at this time. Seeing none, we move to item seven, which are unfinished business. Item 7.1, the 2022 budget. And I believe we did receive an email that on Tuesday, November 30, at 8:30 AM, we're going to have a special council meeting, and one of those items on the agenda is to discuss the 2022 budget. Is there anything else under tonight's agenda that you'd like to address, Sheri, with respect to the budget?
None at this time, Mayor and council.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments about item 7.1 from the elected body? Seeing none, we'll move to item 7.2, the sale of the hospital, hashtag appraisal. Brian Silber, I'm sorry, it should be Brian Lindsey, our city attorney. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. With the recent action of the council, we have cleared what I believe is will be our last hurdle. We have made a submission to the state, and the representatives from the state have indicated that they're going to try and give this priority so we can get this through, so we can meet our amended closing deadline and have this done before the close of the calendar year.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the council with respect to item 7.2? Seeing and hearing none, we move to item 7.3 under unfinished business, which is the rental code ordinance. We continue to work on that. Britt, do we have a...we're making some movement there?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Okay, move to item eight, discussion items. Rather lengthy, toward the end of the year, we must approve these in groups. We don't have to put them individually, but in groups, we can make one motion to approve unless you'd like to pull one for further discussion. So item number 8.1 is approve the 2022 tobacco licenses. 8.1A Edwards Oil Incorporated doing business as Lucky Seven Northside. 8.1B Edwards Oil Incorporated doing business as Lucky Seven Hoover Road. Item 8.1C Miners Incorporated doing business as Super One Foods North. Item 8.1D Miners Incorporated doing business as Super One Foods. Item 8.1E Renda Incorporated doing business as Rocket Liquor. 8.1F IYS Ventures LLC doing business as Imart Stores. Item 8.1G C&amp;B Warehouse Distributing Incorporated doing business as the Virginia Short Stop. Item 8.1H C&amp;B Warehouse Distributing Incorporated doing business as the Virginia Short Stop Express. Item 8.1I Super One Liquor LLC doing business as Super One Liquor. Item 8.1J Holiday Station Stores LLC doing business as Holiday Number 148. Item 8.1K Holiday Station Stores LLC doing business as Holiday Number 41. And finally, 8.1L DG Retail LLC doing business as Dollar General Store Number 13970. These are the items for approval under tobacco license program through the City of Virginia and looking for council action under 8.1A through 8.1L.
Also moved, Mayor.
Moved by Counselor Bearbo and supported by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Under item 8.2, approve the 2022 liquor licenses. 8.2A Allen Burton doing business as Riders on Main. Item 8.2B Martini Incorporated doing business as Tommy's Rainy Lake Saloon and Deli. Item 8.2C Snow Avalanche Incorporated doing business as La Costina and Cantina. Item 8.2D Lozoya LLC doing business as Casadori's Restaurant. Item 8.2E Flamers Incorporated doing business as Flamers. Item 8.2F Grandma's Virginia Incorporated doing business as Grandma's Saloon and Grill. Item 8.2G Peterson Properties/Virginia Incorporated doing business as Poppers. Item 8.2H K-Cor Incorporated doing business as Mel's Sports Page Bar and Snickers Pizza. And item 8.2I Oki's Arrowhead Bar doing business as Oki's Arrowhead Bar. These are the items on the agenda for approval for the 2022 liquor licenses. Looking for council action.
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Counselor Paulson to approve is their support.
Port.
Support by Counselor Johnson. Further discussion? Pam, our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to add Sunday licenses in that motion as well.
I'll amend my motion.
Okay, so you'll amend the motion to include the Sunday liquor licenses as well, and the support by Counselor Johnson to include that. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to approve the 2022 off-sale licenses. Renda Incorporated doing business as Rocket Liquor and Super One Liquor LLC doing business as Super One Liquor. Looking for...moved by Counselor Biondich, is there support?
All support.
Support by Counselor Freedleeb, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Approve the 2022 club licenses, liquor licenses. A is Northern Club Incorporated doing business as the Northern Club. B, American Legion Number 239 doing business as Pratt-Volden Post 1113, I believe it is. And item C is the benevolent protection of Order of Elks Lodge Number 1003 doing business as the Virginia Elks Club. These are the three items for the 2022 club licenses. Counselor Biondich?
Still moved.
Moves to approve, is there support?
All support, Mayor.
Support by Counselor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And finally, the approval of the 2022 3.2 licenses. A, Holiday/Corman LLC doing business as Holiday Station Store Number 41. And B, IYS Ventures LLC doing business as Imart Stores. Item C, Miners Incorporated doing business as Super One Foods North. And item D, Miners Incorporated doing business as Super One Foods South. These are the requested approval for the 2022 3.2 licenses. Looking for council action.
Still moved.
Moved by Counselor Freedleeb and supported by Counselor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Counselor Bearbo?
Pam, is the other Holiday Gas Station not selling 32 beer? They don't. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.3 is to set a public hearing for December 7, 2021, to approve the ADA, the American for Disabilities Act Transition Plan. And so we need to set that hearing date. It looks like December 7, 2021. And what would be the time, Pam? 9:00 AM. So on December 7, at 9:00 AM, public hearing is scheduled for that. And that December 7 is a Tuesday, committee of home meeting date. No, it is. Okay, thank you. A committee of home meeting date, so, thank you. So, need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Need a motion to approve the setting of this public hearing for December 7?
Still moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Barneselli, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.4, adopt the resolution to enter into a Minnesota Department of Transportation agreement for grading and bituminous servicing adjacent to Highway 53. And so there's a resolution in your package. I would like to ask, is this a cost in any way to the city, Britt?
No, this goes back a little bit. This is a discussion we had at a previous council meeting a few months ago regarding the PNH Mine Road. This is some work that's being done to have the J-turn built on Highway 53. And part of that conjunction with that, they're going to rebuild the approach from 53 into the PNH Mine Road. MinDOT cannot get a grant from IRRB to reconstruct that intersection. However, the City of Virginia can, so the money that is listed in this grant application is being covered by IRRB. We've already passed a resolution to allow the city to get IRRB grant to allow us to pay for this.
Thank you, Britt.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you. We all recall that, hopefully. And so we're looking for that resolution, looking for council action.
Still moved.
Moved by Counselor Freedleeb, is there support? Support by Counselor Barneselli, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And finally, 8.5 is adopt the resolution to approve stuff the ambulance, the fire department, along with other entities around the area, use this time to stuff the ambulance for toys, for toys, for tots. And so it's been an ongoing event, very successful one. So looking for some council action. Counselor Biondich?
Still moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Biondich, is there support?
All support, Mayor.
Support by Counselor Bearbo, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Move to item nine, committee reports. The committee of the home meeting that was held on November 16, 2021, will turn this portion of the council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennett. Britt?
Thank you. At the committee of the home meeting on November 16, Mr. Matt Reed, our engineer of record from SCH, discussed the phosphorus improvements required at the wastewater treatment plant. It was moved and supported to authorize SCH proceed with the scope of work as presented for the phosphorus improvements required for our permit at the wastewater treatment facility in the amount of $78,600.
Still moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
All support, Carl.
A support by Counselor Barneselli, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
A presentation was made by Mike I. Lucinda Johnson, Adrian Hansen, and VUMD regarding the sulfate study that's been happening at the wastewater treatment plant. Unfortunately, I didn't get to see it, so I'm going to have to check it out on YouTube. Been kind of following along with that, so I'm kind of bummed that I missed that one. Chief Mattson presented to the city council an IT technology update regarding the needs of the police department. After her discussion, it was moved and supported to approve the resolution for Rogers Online IT Services at a cost of $4,000 per month for the police department.
Still moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Freedleeb, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to evaluate the Pantheon contract versus the Rogers Online contract to see if there's any duplication of charges.
Still moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Barneselli, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in...I'm sorry, further discussion? Counselor Biondich?
Sorry. Thank you. Are we looking over that Pantheon contract to see if there is? Or is there...will that be at the next meeting?
Yeah, maybe the next committee of the home meeting, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. So it has been moved and supported, this resolution, and we'll be discussing it at the next scheduled committee of home meeting. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to hire the independent contractors, skating coaches, and authorize entry into the independent contractor agreements, and require any outstanding contracts to be submitted by the deadline for the agenda packet on Thursday, November 18, 2021.
And has that been done? Do we know, Pam?
We had two that were not submitted, but they are not starting quite yet till January, so I did add contingent upon submission of each executed contract prior to coaching.
Okay.
Also moved.
Moved by Counselor Paulson to approve, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, item number 9.1E, we can remove. She has rejected our offer. She got another offer closer to home.
Okay, thank you. We'll remove item 9.1E as a longer request to hire. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 9.1F is adopt the resolution for hiring a single role EMT Shay Galaski.
Still moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution for hiring single role EMT Marilyn Hannan.
Still moved.
Moved by Counselor Paulson to approve and supported by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to authorize moving Kyle Flatton from Recreation Assistant to the Lead Recreation Assistant position.
Still moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson and supported by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Saw your finger go into the button. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to appoint Counselor Bearbo to the Rams Board of Directors and Counselor Freedleeb as the alternate.
Still moved.
Moved by Counselor Paulson and supported by Counselor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Freedleeb and Counselor Bearbo for serving once again on the Rams Board.
It was moved and supported to appoint Mayor Cuffy Jr. and Counselor Johnson to the Federal Virginia Airport Commission for a one-year term expiring 12/31/22.
Moved by Counselor Biondich and supported by?
Support.
Counselor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing...Counselor Freedleeb?
And we would like to thank you, Mayor Cuffy and Counselor Johnson for serving on that commission.
Well, thank you there, Counselor Freedleeb. So, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. No further items.
Thank you, Britt. Move to item 10, commission liaison reports. Does any city counselor have a commission report that they'd like to give this evening? Counselor Bearbo?
Thank you, fellow counselors. The Public Utilities Commission met yesterday at 2:30 and at 3:30, and they had two separate meetings. The first one was just preliminary. They're starting to work on a contract extension with Minnesota Power for the electrical rates and everything. It looks favorable, but it's right now still in negotiation, so they just want me to mention that they're working on it. And as soon as it becomes in a form where they're going to be looking at, they will be sending it to the council. They had a safety report. This was a very short meeting yesterday, no injuries. The north side steam shut-off has gone well. There's been only two calls so far on the shut-off, so that's a good thing. And those that are working with the contractors that are already working on those homes with alternative heat, so they aren't without heat, but that's the only calls they've gotten so far. They're going to be working with the school on the Malone Hall teardown to see if they can coordinate, because they're going to be trying to do it at the same time that the school is tearing down their portion of the elementary next year, so that may come, so they can use the same contractor at the same time. Because it's going to be tearing up to Second Street anyway, so when they do that. These small boilers that they're planning to put in to be using here in the future for the steam in the smaller area, still going to be some delays because of supply chain. The stainless steel and the stuff that they need is not coming in, but they expect it to be in by the end of December, so they can get that finished out, so they can start using it. Right now, they're using the number seven boiler and producing 50,000 pounds of steam per hour. They don't need quite that much in the future, but that's what they have to produce. That's about the smallest amount out of the utilities that they can produce right now. And that's basically the end of the report. There wasn't much on it yesterday. It was quick and fast.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for you, but before we go to Counselor Johnson. Counselor Johnson?
Mine was the next report, sir.
Okay, thank you. I have a question, if you could pass it on to the utilities, about some of these new businesses that are coming downtown. I'm sure John Sullivan has been working on some of the new business opportunities around the community, particularly in the downtown area as well. And I know there's some demolition moving forward with the old Norman's nightclub on the corner. They're preparing that for demo here pretty quick, and you'll see the work going on in there. But the question that I have is that some of these new businesses that are in the downtown, and even some of the current businesses, I have received a call from two business owners that would like to take the opportunity to convert from steam to gas and not wait two or three years in which to do that. And they were going to look at two alternatives, what would it cost them to do that, and then would they be offered the same opportunity as the other businesses and residences that were not in the core district for that rebate of 75% or 0% loan for 10 years. And so I did refer them both, these business owners and other entities, to the Department of Public Utilities to answer their questions. So I just want to give that information to the council, to the general public, and to you as our liaison, Counselor Bearbo, so that maybe at the next meeting or sometime during the...before that, maybe you could follow up and get us an answer for the next council meeting.
I will. That did not come my best. I was unaware of that, Mayor, so I will now make sure that I'm aware of it for the next meeting as liaison. So, thank you for that information. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Bearbo. Okay, are there any commission liaison reports? Counselor Johnson?
Mayor, I am...would like to invite the general public to the Friends of the Greenhouse Winter Holiday Event on December 4, from 12 to 4. It's a family celebration and merriment. I'm reading off the Facebook page. And then from 4 to 8 is music with a cash bar. It's a fundraiser for the year. Some of the board members and volunteers have been busy decorating with lights. It's been trimmed down and tidied up a little bit. So December 4, it doesn't matter what the weather is, it will be wonderful inside. Take your coat off and stay a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Again, that's December 4, 12 to 4, at 4 to 8 with music and a cash bar. Thank you. All right. Any other commission liaison reports? Okay, we'll move to department head reports. Does any department head have a report they'd like to give? First, we'll start with Britt. Anything else you'd like to report?
No, just a reminder that we're closed on Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you very much, yes.
There is garbage pickup on Friday and Saturday, just not on Thursday. It's the biggest question we get this week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Friday and Saturday, there is garbage pickup for those?
There is garbage pickup, yes.
For you, thank you. And then we're closed Thursday and Friday for the course of the holiday season for the Thanksgiving holiday. Thank you. John Stolven, John from our planning department, any updates, questions, any updates for the department?
Not too much, just working on...
Not too much, just working on the lift station application for CDBG, which is due December 1st. So Sheri and Britt and Matt have been working with me as a team on that. We're applying for CDBG funding as well as IRRB. Britt already submitted that pre-application. So we're kind of using the team approach. There are 17 lift stations we need to fix, and it's mostly technology, which is a little out of my realm for... I'm muddling through this and Britt is helping me, so I appreciate that. And then the public safety facility and all that keeps going on. There's a lot of work that needs to be done with that. So we're pouring through the offer letters and the appraisals and all that. And we have another meeting, online meeting on that tomorrow along with the design stuff that's going concurrently. And, you know, like you mentioned earlier, there's still businesses interested in going to several different locations downtown. It's tough to identify which ones have... For me, it is, just because I haven't been here long enough. But I've come to find that not every building downtown is on steam. There's kind of a patchwork of which ones are and which ones are not and which ones have the ability to tap into gas and which other ones don't, so. So that can be a little bit challenging. So I look forward to listening to Charlie's, what he finds out, and this would be good information for me, too. Other than that, things are going well. Vida is still busy, we're expanding the downtown district. And we sent letters out, and Vince at the AEOA is working on expanding the downtown redevelopment district an additional block. And that's working out well so far. And I think we'll have a few projects coming up soon, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, John, very much, Mr. Sullivan. Anything for Sheri, anything on the budget coming up? I know we have a meeting on the, special meeting on the 30th to review and to pare down or whatever we need to do.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. No, I'm waiting for Tuesday's meeting. I think we got it together, you sent out the packet. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to text me or call me. Just getting anxious here, we only have a few more days left before we hit the 2022 here. But first of all, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, Sheri. I just have one question for you. So at this, or maybe for Britt as well, at this next meeting, will department heads be here as well?
That would be a question for Britt.
Yeah, thank you, Britt, yes. Let's invite the department heads, thank you. Those who can make it. Okay, Pam, anything on the city clerk agenda?
Just a reminder, the Truth and Taxation meeting will be 6:01 on December 14th.
Okay, 6:01 on December 14th is the Truth and Taxation meeting. Thank you. And Brian, our city attorney, anything on our docket for discussion or dissemination?
Not at this point, no report, Mayor.
Thank you, Brian, appreciate it very much, okay. Counsel reports. First, Council Freely, and then I would like to talk about the Festival of Trees a little bit. Council Freely.
See, I was going to say a shout out and kudos to Britt and any and all volunteers, Santa and Mrs. Claus and everybody that was involved with the whole week-long celebration of Festival of Trees. It was a great get-together for the city of Virginia, culminating with the fireworks on Saturday. It was just a great week of activity in the city and it was... Thank you.
Thank you, and just to add on to that a little bit, the amount of time and effort and the personnel and all the collaboration between various groups in the city and everybody worked together for that whole event Wednesday all the way through Sunday. And I tell you, I really enjoyed it, I know that. Man, I got so many compliments, calls about the events and how they went and really packed those, that bingo in the event center there. It was about over 400 people there, so. And the comments I got the most was the fact that the facility that we have is beautiful and the staff was very amenable. The concession stand was moving, you know, as fast as it could. And there was a lot of things being sold there and the trees went well. I mean, it was all really, it was just a phenomenal event. And that parade was, to see those kids and all the families all along the street, it was like, it was a mini Christmas city of the north, but this was really the Christmas parade of the north. And it's getting bigger and better every year. And thank you, Britt, and everybody from Revir, Virginia, whoever it was. It was just a great event, so thanks for everybody's hard work. So look forward to it next year. Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to bring before the council before we adjourn for the evening? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn to our special council meeting, which will be Tuesday, November 30th at 8:30 a.m., right here in the council chambers. And then our regularly scheduled council meeting will be on Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, at 5:30 p.m. with the Truth and Taxation at 6:01. So thank you, everybody, for everything. Have a great and safe evening. Have a great, happy and successful and safe and fun-filled and happy Thanksgiving and whatever you're going to have. We stand adjourned. Thank you, good night.